To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Okay, welcome to tonight's meeting. This will be the 1,960...well, excuse me. This will set the agenda for the 1,962nd regular meeting of Livonia City Council, which will take place on Monday, February 13th of 2023. There will be no votes taken this evening, but there will be motions made by council members either offering to approve, deny, or refer an item to a committee. But those motions will be voted on on February 13th. The council has six members present this evening. Ms. Toy is absent. She's not feeling well. She's been a little under the weather, but slowly improving. But we will go to audience communication at this point. The council sets aside 30 minutes for anybody in the audience to address the council on any items that are not on the agenda this evening. Is there anybody who would like to address the council at this time? Going once, going twice. Okay, we will go to council communication. Is there anybody on the council who would like to make any announcements? Mr. Barr?
Just, I was trying to catch our Livonia TV folks during the break and wasn't able to, so I'm just gonna do it here. I'm getting mess...I have a resident that messaged me and said that there is no sound for anyone watching on cable TV. Audio is working on YouTube, but they're having a sound issue with cable, so I'm just letting you know.
Spectrum issue.
Okay, so we can't do anything about it? Okay, so friends, if you're still watching, we're told unfortunately tonight it can't...it's a spectrum issue and there's nothing we can do, but they're aware of the problem. So hopefully you two will continue to work for people. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Barr. If there's nothing else from the council at this time, we'll go right to the agenda for tonight. Item number one on the agenda is a request to waive the city's noise ordinance coming to us from Gail Wilcox of Anastasia and Katie's Coffee Shop to host a car show with a DJ in the parking lot of the business at 19215 Merriman Road on Saturday, May 20th, 2023, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Good evening, sir. Tell me your name, please.
Good evening. Hello. My name is Ian Edgar, and I work with Anastasia and Katie's Coffee Shop. Let's see. I am here to represent Anastasia and Katie's Coffee Shop. We are located at 19215 Merriman Road north of Seven Mile on the west side of Merriman, next to Angel Saints and stuff. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit on a mission to create employment for people with disabilities. I am here tonight to seek permission for a permit for a car show fundraiser on May 20th, 2023, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in our parking lot. Last year's car show was a huge success, and we are hoping this year will be even better.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. McIntyre?
Good evening, Ian. Always nice to have you here with us. The car show, last year was the first, right?
I...yes.
Yes.
Last year was the first.
It was great. I would be very pleased and honored to offer an approving resolution on consent, which means you don't have to come back to the next meeting, although you're always welcome to come back. We always like to see you, but I'd like to offer that if there are no objections.
Thank you, Ms. McIntyre.
And could you give us the date again, please?
It is May 20th, 2023.
Right there. It's right in front of me. All right. We're looking forward to it.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You, too.
Oh, before I forget, I do have some flyers to pass out. Any idea who I would pass these out to?
Give them to Mr. Lear.
And there are two extra flyers in here. Would you guys mind posting them at the clerk's window?
Not at all.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good night.
Have a good night. Take care. Is there any audience communication on item number one? There is not. We'll move on to item number two. A request for authorization to purchase one 2023 Lifeline Type 1 Superliner ambulance coming to us from the Fire Department to place the current frontline vehicle in our vehicle replacement program. This is from budgeted funds. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, President. Council members, thank you. The Fire Department is requesting an approving resolution to waive the formal bid process for the purchase of a 2023 Lifeline ambulance from R&amp;R Firetruck in North Hill Township at the cost of $277,676 from budgeted funds. This purchase is being made through the Houston Galveston Council Cooperative Consortium, previously approved by City Council. This unit will replace one of our frontline units at Station 1, Squad 1, at which time that unit would be put into reserve status, and then two 2006s would be moved out of reserve status into be decommissioned and sold or traded in.
Thank you, Chief. Is there a motion from the council? Mr. McCullough?
I'd be happy to offer an approving for consent.
Thank you, sir. Is there any audience comments or communication in regards to item number two? I see none. We'll move on to item number three. That's yours as well, Chief. A request for authorization to purchase one power-load ambulance cot loading system to be placed in frontline vehicles and improve worker and patient safety from budgeted funds.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Again, the department's requesting an approving resolution to waive the formal bid process for the purchase of a new power-load ambulance stretcher fastening system from Stryker Medical at the price of $24,877.39 from budgeted funds. This purchase is being made from a sole-source provider of the equipment. This matches all the equipment that we have in stock right now, and our ambulance isn't required to keep compatibility between all the stretchers and the ambulance loading systems. It's an essential piece of safety equipment for both our patients and our crews, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Morgan?
Yes, I'd like to offer approving for consent.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. President.
Mr. Donavick?
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief, thank you for being here this evening. When you talk about the power-load equipment, if I remember correctly, at the Fire Ops 101, which was a fabulous event, and me as one council member, it felt like I learned a lot, that was the machine, the mechanism that actually was helping lift patients up into the ambulance, correct?
That is correct. It's a power-loading system. It comes out of the back of the ambulance. The stretchers mount to them, hook to them, as they're put against them. They lock in, and that lifts the stretcher up, allows the wheel carriage to come underneath, and then rolls it in and locks it into position in the back of the ambulance so that during transport, if there's any type of an incident, a fast stop, an unfortunate accident, the patient's stretcher stays secured where it is in the ambulance.
I had the pleasure of driving around. We were driving around lights and sirens, and we were trying to make radio runs to the dispatch, and we had the 200-pound dummy, and we're trying to administer CPR and other medical life-saving techniques on this dummy. And I can only imagine trying to keep that thing, hold it while doing their job. It just doesn't make sense. I think this is an essential piece of equipment to save lives here in the community and a really great return on investment when you talk about helping save the backs of our firefighters when they're trying to lift up that dummy into the back of that ambulance.
Mr. Donavick?
Thank you, Mr. President.
You shouldn't refer to Mr. McCullough that way. Thank you. Is there any audience communication on item number three? I see that there is not. Chief, you're all set. Thank you very much. You have two approvings.
Thank you very much.
Item number four is an award of bid from the Division of Police to replace the network firewall and switching infrastructure that is currently at end-of-life and out of warranty. This comes...well, this request comes from a budgeted fund. Chief, good evening.
Good evening, Council President Jolly and council members. Yes, this is a request to get new network firewall and switching infrastructure, which is at end-of-life, out of warranty, and scheduled to be replaced. We did do sealed bids, and as you see, Bullfrog Group was our choice, and they're the only ones that bid. It's essentially sole-source provider, but we put out sealed bids in case there was anybody doing it now. Bullfrog's been our vendor for over a decade. They do great work. They understand the needs that we have, our rules, dealing with Clemis, et cetera. This project will be paid for through budgeted funds, which includes Fire Department funds as we help do their infrastructure. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Chief. Counsel? Mr. Morgan?
I'll offer approving for consent on this.
Thank you, sir. Is there any audience comment on item number four? There is not. Item number five, a request for authorization to waive the sealed bid process and purchase 11 marked and unmarked police vehicles using the State of Michigan Cooperative bid pricing and Macomb County Consortium bid pricing, coming to us from the Division of Police from budgeted funds. Chief?
Thank you. Yes, this is a request for our replacement of marked and unmarked police vehicles as part of our annual vehicle replacement program. Various assignments for these marked and unmarked police vehicles include uniform patrol, semi-marked, and detective work, undercover work, all those good things. We used State of Michigan bid pricing and Macomb County bid pricing, so we'd offer a request to waive the sealed bid process, and these are from budgeted funds. And I will say again, this year we are coming in under budget for vehicles. Again, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. McCullough?
And Council President, I know I always point this out, but when we talk about a cooperative purchasing agreement, that means we are leveraging the best pricing that's out there. I do have one question. How's the lead times on these things?
Well, I'll tell you what. Last year and the year before was quite a struggle for, you know, supply chain issues, COVID and all that stuff. It's getting better. Hopefully it won't be a year. We did have to carry over the last couple of years. I don't anticipate us doing any carryforwards this year, so I'm hopeful we'll get them, most of them, by summertime.
Cool. I'd be happy to offer an approving on consent.
Thank you. Mr. Barr?
Chief, are these, just looking at what was budgeted in the accounts for these, are these all the vehicles from those accounts that you plan to buy this year, or are we gonna have more coming?
Yeah, I wanted to come one time to ask for all the vehicles we're gonna be person this year. Of course, that doesn't...does allow for if we have any issues with vehicles that break down or get in accidents this year, we may have to come back for replacement vehicles, but these are our budgeted numbers for the year.
And then, I won't go...I mean, it's on the packet, the specific vehicles, but it was interesting to go through and see what you're looking at. A number of these, I know you said are for unmarked operations, but just, it's interesting to look at the mixture of minivans, full-size SUVs, full-size CUVs, et cetera. Are these, those cars, not the police cars, but are those cars, are they essentially pool cars, or are they individually assigned, or?
Most are individually assigned for various different assignments, ranging range from detective work to undercover work, so that's why we have varying descriptions of vehicles.
And just with the life cycle of these within the police department, do those stay in the police department until we retire them, or do they get...
In fact, most of them do. In fact, some are older vehicles. If we don't auction them off, they'll go to our departments within the city.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Barr. Is there anybody from the audience wishing to comment on item number five? I see none. We'll go to item number six, a request to approve hourly rate increase coming to us from the Civil Service Department for the classification of police reserve officer. Ms. Liebel?
Good evening, everyone. Janine Liebel, on behalf of the Civil Service Department, we're here to request an increase to the classification of police reserve officer. They're currently earning $1,250 per hour. We'd like to move that to 15. They provide a lot of the services around the city, including events where everyone sees them at this Livonia Spree here at City Hall, and even on occasion, we contract them out to other municipalities and organizations. They carry the same weapons. They go through the process of certifying that they are to qualify their pistols quarterly. They take extensive trainings, and they do a great job for us.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Ms. McIntyre was first.
I'll defer to...
Okay. Mr. Donavick?
Mr. Donavick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think our reserve program is super important here in the city of Livonia. They help offset a lot of different community events in our city. There's a lot of reserve officers. There are reserve officers here every single day at City Hall. A number of colleagues here on council interact with them daily. We've participated at events with the chief, and I know the chief's super supportive over this initiative. One question I have is, how many reserve officers do we currently have?
Pardon me, just a moment so I can confirm. I think it's a fairly high number, but I don't want to misstate it.
Currently, we have 41. I'd like to be right around 40 to 45.
So your goal is to get to about 45?
Yes.
Do you think giving this increase could help our, help the department reach that number?
I certainly hope it helps with attracting more people to volunteer to be police reserve officers, but I also hope it retains many of the ones we have now.
My last question, do you think you can get Councilman Morgan to volunteer to be a reserve officer?
He does have the experience, councilman. We'd love to have him.
I heard he has some experience. I'm gonna defer the rest of my time to my colleague, Councilman McIntyre.
Thank you, Councilmember Donavick. I think this is, this has been a topic of conversation several times over the last several years, and if you look at the changes that we've made based on competitive, I mean, we'd like to pay all of our city employees just a lot of money because they're great, but I think as the taxpayers know, they hear it, that we look at a competitive situation, and we look at what it takes to retain and attract people. If you look at the fact that we increased library page wages, and not saying that that wasn't appropriate because we voted to do it, but those top out at $15, and if you look at what other communities pay, and we have a slightly different structure in Livonia for our reserve officers, so it's hard to do apples to apples. We end up with apples to oranges, but $15 is, I don't even have to think about it, and if my colleagues don't object. Did you already offer, Robert? I'd like to offer that for the consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. McIntyre.
Mr. McCullough, if I may, through the chair. Have you, obviously you did some comparables, I would imagine, to other...is this on par, or is this lower? I'm just curious of where we stand.
It's still pretty low, to be honest with you. I think that the city is taking great strides to try and stay competitive. Excuse me, and we do a wonderful job, especially with our benefits packages, but we do make sure that we are looking at other communities and we're not, you know, jumping too far ahead, but we work to stay competitive in this environment.
Because that's, you know, 15, you know, especially for this program and how important our reserve officers are, I would just make sure that this is, you know, if we needed to relook at it, to be more competitive, you know, but if you guys are the professionals, we'll take your, you know, decision on this and go from there.
If I may, I think we take a conservative approach in that we raise it, we see what happens, we check the market, and then if we have to, I'll come back and ask you again.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your question.
Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, well, Mr. McCullough kind of took what I was, where I was going with this. I think $15 is kind of low for our reserve officers, and I just was wondering how you came up with that, and you already explained that you went to surrounding communities, but what communities have reserve officers like we do and that do the functions that ours do? Do you, can you have any, give me an example?
I can give you a couple examples. Say, if you look at Dearborn and Canton, some of our surrounding areas, some of those have programs where the officers are either paid more or they're volunteer positions, so it kind of goes in both directions. Here in Livonia, we staff this position, and we utilize these officers much more than our surrounding communities did when we reached out to ask that question.
Okay, so basically, we just kind of grabbed a number out of the air and...
No, not at all. We would never do that. We did our math and we did our homework. We went and, I think Captain Marquette polled, I want to say, 20 or more different police departments and municipalities to find out what their pay structure was.
Okay, for reserve officer, you're saying?
Yes, for reserve officers.
Okay. All right. I'm hoping that in the future, we can get that raised up, but that's just well too low to give someone that's carrying a gun that has the responsibilities that our reserve officers do, so maybe we can look at something in the future.
Mr. President?
Mr. Donavick?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a question. Ms. Liebel, what do our crossing guards get paid right now?
They're at 15 as well.
15 as well? Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you, Ms. Liebel. Is there any audience comment? I see none. We have some of our reserve all-stars out back here in the back row, so we want to thank them for everything they do, and thank you for punishing yourselves by coming to our meeting, and, but we're always glad to see you.
Can I just add one more thing?
Yes.
Another role, I just want to point this out, that our reserve officers, I think we have Marcy back there, oversee the CERT program, and the CERT are all volunteers, and we all know CERT very well, but that's another function that our, and Livonia's CERT program and our CERT, the number of volunteers and what they do is much, is much more extensive than many of our communities, and I believe if I'm not mistaken, that's run under the auspices of the Reserve Department. I know it also reports into a uniformed officer, but the reserves play a role in overseeing that program, and I think doing some training and supervision.
I think you're correct, but I'd defer to the police department for the official word.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have an approving for consent, but thank you all. We'll move on to item number seven, is a request to approve the City of Livonia AFSMI Union Local 1917 Contract Agreement for the period of December 1 through November 30th of 2025 from the Civil Service Department. Ms. Liebel?
Good evening. We are here to request the approval of our 1917 contract. It is closely aligned with our 192 contract. The benefits are substantially similar. I'd say there's very few, if any, differentiators in this one, only that it applies to a different class of employees.
Thank you. Counsel, any motions? Mr. Morgan?
I'll make a motion for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Mr. Barr?
Just a...
On consent, that is.
Thank you, sir.
Can I get a Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Okay. Just a couple of questions, and I did have the chance to talk to Janine on the phone today. Thanks for answering my questions, Janine. Just a couple more. Forgive me if I ask you a question. I already asked you, but the item in the contract about the stand-in procedure, can you just, can you just educate me and maybe anybody else as to what that is?
Sure. When we have an emergency that happens off-hours, for example, if you had a water main break on a day that was a holiday, the, I'd say the public would call it into the police department, and the police department then has to dispatch someone in DPW. In order to streamline that process, they have someone who is the call-in person who takes the call and then decides, okay, if that person is someone from the roads crew, they would then call, if they couldn't handle it personally, they would call someone from the water department so that they can handle it. It's really sort of a one-point person that then fans the calls out to DPW.
So in the packet that you provided us, it says memorialize the current standby procedure. That word memorialize, was it just something, we'd been doing it, but it wasn't actually part of the contract?
We were doing it. It was covered, but not, not in such a formality, so yes, we wanted to make that more of a standard for, part of their contract, and then increased the wage since it hadn't been increasing in many years.
Okay. Two more questions. One, the, sorry, I'm going off my notes here. Let me just read this to make sure I don't misspeak. You say this contract includes the option, and I know we've done this with some others too, the option for alternative work schedules, namely four-day work weeks where it may make sense. One question I have about that is, if I'm reading this correctly, the intent is that that would be managed, that we'd still have people available in those departments five days, right?
Yes. My understanding is that we are not...
Or more.
Yes. We're not going to reduce city services to anyone, in that we're just working on a flexible schedule so that way we can, for example, if you send our DPW crews out Monday through Thursday on 10-hour days, it then leaves you two more days of the, well, technically three more days of the week to continue a job if you had to.
Okay, and then my final question, and in full disclosure, to any from the, from the public might be watching, this is something as to how this might impact council, because for those watching, part of the, and this is all public information, but part of the compensation package, if you will, such as it is for being on City Council, is reimbursements for some dental and optical expenses. I noticed there's a piece in here about going to an optional insurance plan instead of the reimbursement system. From a selfish perspective, I'm curious, how, if at all, does that affect what council has had through that?
I'm really excited you asked that. We were able to negotiate a change to Delta Dental and our vision, and a vision plan as well through IMED. Those plans will offer substantially the same benefits. They will help, if I may speak about general employees, so if you have someone who's new to the workforce and they may not have a budget to front, to pay upfront for all their dental bills, they can instead use insurance, which would cover them fairly immediately. How it would pertain to all of you, we have, what, we're gonna run through the reimbursement system for one more year, and then we'll transition over to that plan next year.
Got it. Thank you very much.
May I?
Ms. McIntyre?
I have a question, Ms. Liebel, about, about represented workers and contracts. I know a lot more about compensation for exempt employees than I do represented employees. In the, in the, in the exempt world, there's a move among a lot of organizations, both large and small, to go to one PTO bank as opposed to personal days, sick days, vacation time. Is that happening in the world of represented employees, or no, because of the, because of the specificity with things, you know, it's a different system, right, of timekeeping and rules?
It is a different system with a lot more specificity. It also would have sort of a peeling-of-the-onion effect that if you tried to put it all together, we'd have to unravel several other rules, and that's not to say that we're not willing to do that work to be innovative. It just, at this time, isn't something that we were considering.
I understand. I understand the complications. It's, I think the issue is that allowing people to take buyout when they leave for sick time, there are some perverse incentives there, and I'm not, you know, not accusing anyone specifically, right, or our employees specifically of doing this, but it's human nature. And if you really maybe should be homesick, but you know that that's gonna be a day paid out at the end, it's not aligned necessarily with ideal incentives, but...
No...
And I know you're well aware of this, so that's why I asked about putting all the PTO together, and I understand the impediments.
And relative to sick time, if you are hired prior to 2011, that gets paid out directly. After 2011, it goes into our retirement health savings plan account. We also have another...
It's a good point.
...provision in here where some of that time, if you haven't used it, it gets paid out at a different rate, and that is to maintain improved attendance, and that, so people aren't trying to use that sick time before they leave.
It's all very complicated, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any audience comment on item seven? I see none. We'll move to item number eight. Thank you, Ms. Liebel. Item number eight is a request to approve, for approval to amend the 2016 through 2021 consolidation plan and 2019 through 2020 annual action plan from the Livonia Housing Commission to allocate CARES Act funding to the Community Development Block Grant to include activities that prevent, prepare for, and respond to the spread of infectious diseases such as coronavirus, 2019 COVID-19, and the site's council resolutions 140-20, 178-19, and 181-16. Good evening.
Good evening. Hello, council members. My name is Armin Sims. I'm the interim director for the Housing Department. I'm here today to submit our third substantial amendment to the CDBG 2019 Annual Action Plan. CDBG is amending its budget to allocate $300,000 of CARES Act funds toward the public, from public services to our small business grants program that we are currently developing, in the development stages of, and we're doing this in partnership with the Economic Development Department.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any comments?
Mr. President?
Or motions from council? Mr. Donavick?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for being here today. Appreciate it. When reading through this item, you know, I couldn't help but think, what, when you say activities, what sort of activities does the Housing Commission Department have planned specific to this item?
Well, the purpose of the Small Business Grant Program is to provide preparedness training for small businesses in Livonia in case of a future pandemic, and also to provide additional funding for those businesses that are currently still struggling from the, since COVID-19.
Okay, so this isn't specific to senior citizens in our housing department? This is more specific to the businesses and how the city's helping those businesses?
Yes.
Okay, so prior to COVID-19 and the CARES Act, we didn't really have this program?
We did do one round of it with our first round of funding from the CARES Act.
Okay, and then you talked about $300,000. How much, how much money does the CDBG fund currently have, or after the $300,000, how much more does the department currently have?
Of CARES Act money, love? I believe, matter of fact, it's like 50,000. It's like 50,000 that'd be left over for us to do other things within the community. We did a mental health, we did several mental health programs for at the senior facilities throughout Livonia. So we're using for things like that going forward.
Great. Well, as a small business owner, I always appreciate when there's these sorts of things that communities are doing to help out. I look forward to the those dollars, the CARES Act dollars being ran out and and because it is a lot of money that's the taxpayers of our country are paying, but it's the dollars we have in our community and I appreciate that you're utilizing them in the manner that you are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did you offer an approving, Mr. Donovan?
I did not.
Okay. Mr. McCullough?
I'd be happy to offer an approving for consent.
Thank you. Is there any audience comments on this? I see none. We have an approving for consent on item number eight. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Item number nine is an award of bid from the Public Works Division Forestry Department for the city-owned Tree Audit and Update Inventory Database from Budgeted Funds. Mr. Moore?
Good evening, counsel. Doug Moore with the Department of Public Works. Treekeeper, the original inventory was done in 2000 as a result of the Val Van Der Sluit-led initiative to have Livonia become a tree city through the Arbor Day Foundation in 1999. Our current inventory is computer-based. It is also now on the cloud. It has been for seven years. We are in the second five-year contract with Davy Resource Group, and they're hosting our program. They have all our data up somewhere. And before that, it was on our servers, so this was a good thing when it went to them. They're able to push out the updates a lot quicker. We get them instantaneously. When I started with the city, we were at Treekeeper three, and we are now at Treekeeper eight-point something.
What does that mean exactly?
It means we're able to do a lot more with the inventory. It's easier to update. It's easier to work with. It's easier to change. With this inventory, Davy will visit each and every site, planning site that we have in Livonia. We currently figure we have about 45,000 planning sites, of which 38,000 are occupied. Unfortunately, when the original inventory was done, some of those sites included Wayne County trees, fire hydrants, light poles. So this time around, we're going to have GIS ability. They'll go out and GIS each one of our planning spots when they go out and do this. Also, when this is done, we will get a tree risk assessment for every tree. This is a program through the International Society of Arbiculture that will help us know how to manage our forest. The cost is $169,000. We did not go out for competitive bid because Davy did the original inventory. Davy can work with that inventory and not have to redo everything with it. There are parts that are still usable. The cost is, we currently have funding in the capital budget, but the cost is going to be offset with a $500,000 earmark that was procured by Representative Pohodsky. We have applied, we had to apply for it, but the funding was ours. For this year, we're going to do the Treekeeper inventory and plant $50,000 worth of trees with our 2023 program, and then we have four years to use the remaining funds. And we're figuring out ways to do that right now. And with that, I will, I'm available for questions if you have any.
Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, this is pretty exciting to be able to provide all these analytics going forward. I know when, as being the council member on the Tree Committee, this is something that is going to help you out immensely and especially being Rep. Pohodsky. Kudos to her and her team for securing a half million bucks. And kudos to you and the team for spending the money and just make sure you spend it all by 2000, is it 26?
Yes, 2026.
No, this is exciting to be, especially to pair with the GIS. It's it'll be a great enhancement for not only you, but even the community to be able to show how our canopy is improving over year over year. Thank you. No, nothing's been offered, has it? I'd be happy to offer an approving for consent.
Thank you, Mr. McCullough. Mr. Burr?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Doug, forgive my ignorance, but is is the primary difference with what this will do for us versus what we've done for the last 24 years, the the GIS component?
Yes, and it will update the information we have currently. As we do a removal list, we go in and manually remove trees. As we do a planning list, we go in and manually input planning. Usually, one equals one, but with the way the program was done, it doesn't necessarily mean that it's one equals one. It might be one is point five.
So there's more opportunity for error in the current system? Is that basically what you're saying?
In the older system, yes. The newer system will have the points set and we'll know what's there.
Just I was curious, and maybe maybe this was nothing other than a stylistic thing, but in the packet provided to us, it put about the grant that came to us, it put it in quotes. What is it, a grant or is it something else or?
It's an earmark that's presented as a grant, I guess.
Okay. So the Michigan Economic Development Corporation is investing a half a million dollars in trees?
Is administrating the funding.
Okay.
My understanding, my understanding.
Yeah, I'd I'll just I'll echo something on a previous item. I mean, it's one of those things that the money's there. I'm glad, I think I think this is a good use for us with this, but I'm just going to repeat that again. The Michigan Economic Development Corporation is investing a half a million dollars in in trees. So the the last question that I have is, I remember a number of years ago, and I'm not going to venture a guess, is that more more than 10, there was a focused effort in certain areas of the city to to plant trees along major thoroughfares. One particular place, I know of six mile between roughly between Newburgh and Wayne, I know many of those trees were part of that program, and I'm sure other areas, too. I'm just living over there. I'm familiar with that. Curious if there's any plans for similar types of focused approaches among some of our major thoroughfares. I was just recently on another one of our major thoroughfares where I happened to notice that the thought just went through my mind, man, it would really spruce this thing up to get a similar kind of treatment. Are there any of those plans in place?
With this extra funding, that's something we can look at now. As you know, those are Wayne County right-ofways. We don't ever expect Wayne County to be able to plant trees. It was done 20 years ago from Newburgh, or yeah, from Newburgh to Levanna on Six Mile, the county planted those trees, and some on Seven Mile in the same area. They aren't able to do that now. So that might be something that we can look at doing with the extra funding.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks, Mr. Moore, for being here. When we talk about inventory tracking, are we like inventorying trees on private property? If I plant a tree in my front yard or remove the tree in my front yard, are we tracking that somehow or?
It's only the right-ofway trees. This will only be the trees in the public right-ofway, either between the sidewalk and the curb or that width on the roads that don't have sidewalks. This will not include private trees, will not include public trees and parks, nature preserves.
My only experience with GIS, from my understanding, Mr. Engineer, is that's the the GIS is more or less we inventory where utilities are on the ground. Is that something similar to the GIS program or is that drastically different from the two?
You know, they'll just, they can stand next to the, they have the ability to stand next to the tree with the recorder and set that point right in that spot on the map. And then that will pull in the information for that specific tree or location, which will give us genus, species, size, height, condition, you name it.
Very cool technology. Awesome. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll move to item number 10. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Award of bid and request to amend the contract with OHM Advisors and authorization for additional appropriation coming to us from the Public Works Division for the Construction Administration Services for the Building Control System Upgrade Project from the Capital Projects Fund. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you, Jacob Rushlow with the Department of Public Works. The purpose of this project is to perform a major upgrade to the building controls at the Police Department Headquarters, the Civic Center Library, our Sandberg Branch Library, and the 16th District Courthouse. This would provide a building controls interface that allows multiple buildings to be managed from one system, thereby allowing for remote energy management controls. This will also allow for scheduling each building based on occupancy and energy use to optimize demands for heating and cooling. In addition, building occupants will also have better onsite comfort controls in their workspaces. The building maintenance staff would be able to receive a real-time remote alerts and notifications of building issues that would come directly to them for maintenance work, like if there was a power outage or a piece of equipment failure, they would get those alerts ahead of time and be able to react quickly and appropriately for that situation. In order to proceed with the construction of this project, bid documents were prepared by the department with assistance from our architects and mechanical engineers at OHM Advisors, and those documents were made publicly available for bid on BidNet Direct. A bid opening was held on January 10, and two competitive bids were received. Havel was the lowest qualified bidder at a price of $981,662. A copy of their bid proposal, bid tab, and a recommendation letter from OHM are also provided for your consideration in your packets. Additionally, OHM will remain involved with this project through completion of construction by providing oversight through Construction Administration Services. So it's our recommendation from the department that council take the following actions to proceed with this project. First, accept the bid and award a contract with Havel in the amount of $981,662. Authorize a contract amendment with OHM Advisors for their Construction Administration Services in the amount of $55,000. And authorize additional expenditure of $646,505 from budgeted funds in the Capital Building Fund. And authorize an additional appropriation of $390,157 from the unexpended fund balance of the Capital Project Fund. That total expenditure is $1,036,662. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Council President. To the chair, to Mr. Rushlow. Looking over the scope, I mean, I I love everything about it, upgrading the controls because I'm assuming that you're probably dealing with pneumatics and some other various things that are probably stone age. My only concern is, is, you know, over at least the past three years since I've been on council, we've had and we had the air handler go down here. We had an air handler go down at Sandberg, and these were more of emergency purchases. And I know you're getting your arms around everything, but my bigger concern is, is do we have any existing issues with current air handlers, heating plants, chiller plants? And then you're, you know, you're going to put all this new technology on, you know, something that might need to be replaced. That's my big concern. And then also, we do have, obviously, a plant Moran. I'll be setting that meeting up, and this, obviously, I think would be a good thing to pair to make sure that that would be going with the capital needs assessment.
Yep. No, absolutely. All all good points.
Is this something? I I guess, is there other? My worry is, is what comes out of that needs assessment is probably going to trump a lot of the stuff of where controls would be. Controls are great, but obviously, if they're controlling things that are ready to fail that are huge expenditures, I'd rather make sure that we did our due diligence of replacing those first. For that, just because obviously, this is a deeper discussion, I'd like to refer this to the capital outline and infrastructure to pair if that's at all possible with the review of the needs assessment.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Anything else from the council? Donovan?
Does that motion need support?
It does not. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Burr?
Mr. Rushlow, I appreciate Mr. McCullough's line of questioning and agree with what he's proposed. The capital needs assessment, we've heard about this a lot. I feel like for a little while now, I've been talking about how we're going to be hearing this soon. When are we going to see this, or the results of this?
Yeah, and as Councilman McCullough had mentioned, he had.
Oh, that's on you?
At the previous meeting, he had referred, with support of council, that item to the Capital Audit and Infrastructure Committee, which Councilman McCullough chairs. So that is.
Perfect.
In the works of being set up for a meeting here sometime soon. And we'll be inviting Plant Moran, Carissa back, along with our team, to present that information to council.
Okay. That does ring a bell now that you say it. And the other questions I had on this, I'll hold off until whenever we take it up in a committee meeting, so.
Okay. Is there any public comments on item 10? Seeing none, we'll move to 11. A request to release development bonds. Oh, you're all done, Mr. Rushlow. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
11 is a request to release development bonds from the Engineering Division for the Capri Court Site condominium located on the west side of Farmington Road between Norfolk Avenue and Eight Mile Road in the northeast quarter of Section 4, setting Council Resolution 30419. Mr. Lear?
I'm not sure, but on my agenda, you skipped over number 11.
I just read 11 on my copy here.
The city works online software update? Oh, okay. I got an old one?
I don't think that's on here.
Sorry, I hit it wrong. I had an old version.
That's okay.
Okay. I don't know. That got in there.
I've made mistakes before.
Yeah, no. My bad. So, yeah, this is actually one of our good times where one of our developments has been completely finished, and we are looking to refund the developer bonds as a closeout. The Capri Court subdivision, Farmington Road just south of Eight Mile, they've completed all the work associated with the project, and we are looking to refund their bonds and close out the project.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Counsel?
I will offer an approving resolution for consent.
Ms. McIntyre?
There are no objections.
Is there any audience comment? I see none. We'll move on to our final item for the evening. Item number 12, a request to accept stormwater facilities maintenance agreement coming to us from the Engineering Division from LS Equity LLC in conjunction with the construction of a storm drain system that provides adequate drainage for the property located on the north side of Plymouth Road, east of Middlebelt Road, in the northwest quarter of Section 25. Mr. Lear?
Yes, this is another project that they've finished off, the underground storm sewer system. And as part of the requirements for accepting that, we have to get a stormwater management agreement with Wayne County. So basically, if they don't fix the, any problems with the storm system, the city is allowed to go in and fix it for them and be reimbursed. It's just a requirement from Wayne County for any new development that goes in.